Next item, please.
Okay. The next item is discussion on policy update, policy five, one, one, one. Point oh two, enrollment of non-resident children of Dearborn Board of Education. Wait a minute. Oh, whoops. Enrollment of non-resident children of, wait. Oh, of employees. Okay, enrollment of non-resident children of employees. Sorry.
Good evening once again, board. So, this policy was discussed at the last policy committee meeting. There was just a minor language change to include grandparents as well as parents as eligible for this benefit to be able to bring their children here to Dearborn.
Wait a minute, you mean like grandchildren? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. The grandparents don't want to attend Dearborn Public Schools.
Well, some.
Adult education.
Adult education, that's right.
Okay.
This is the official bringing it to you as discussion. It will appear at the next board meeting as an agenda item as long as the board doesn't have any questions or changes.
Trustee Al-Jahmi.
So grandchildren, are they living with them? I mean, I'm trying to get more.
No, they don't. This is part of the collective bargaining agreements with the unions. And so, when the board had changed the policy, this was done a couple, a year and a half ago, and it took us a while to do that through the policy committee and the board changed it. The direction I got was to go ahead and negotiate with the unions. They approached us, so we have letters of agreement with all employee groups that provide them the flexibility so they do not have to necessarily live or be a legal guardian. They just have to be a grandparent of, they have to be an employee, a current employee, and then their grandchildren can attend, so that was negotiated.
And this is all employees across the board?
Correct.
So regardless where they live?
Correct. Yes. And so this policy allowing non-resident employees, this has been around since, I'm thinking approximately 2006 maybe. It was approved.
It was kind of a trade-off perk when we didn't have the financial ability to give raises.
So it's been around for a while. We just, it was tweaked through the collective bargaining agreement because when the policy was eliminated, we did not have it in the union contracts. So we negotiated with the union, you know, and we appreciate the leadership of our union presidents through those negotiations to get this done with HR last year.
Just as a matter, oh, sorry, is it okay?
No, I'm good.
As a matter of like practi, just, how often does this happen?
The students coming or the negotiating?
Like how many, how many, sorry, yeah, sorry. How many, we have 20,000 kids in our schools roughly. How many kids in our schools are people who are taking advantage of this policy?
I'll have to check. I, if I, I could be throwing out a number. I don't want to throw out a number that I don't know, but.
Is it 100?
It might be less than 100, but I'm not 100%.
Okay.
And they have to, they have to accept the school that has.
Sure, sure, sure.
Capacity.
Yeah, they can't just go and choose, you know, so the, Ama Shur's office works through it, you know.
Okay, but it might be like 100.
Yeah, I think so. Again, I have, we had the data before when we did that a year ago.
Yeah, you did.
Mason, can you get it for us?
100, I have it in my head, but we still.
I think it's less too.
Less than 200? Yeah, probably. One percent.
It's not, not, well, the reason I know is because when we were looking at it before the approvals in the policy, it was not widespread number. So I'm just throwing, but I don't know the exact figure.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, just like other, I would just say, you know, the unions negotiate, but, you know, we hear other, like in industry or Ford Motor or other things, there's certain things that employees get benefits through their bargaining agreements, and so this is a way to give back to our employees.
This policy, does this policy, sorry, I mean, is this policy exist in other school districts that you know of? I mean, or we don't know?
I'm not 100% of that. I'd have to look, but, but a lot of, a lot of districts in our area, Wayne County though, are school of choice districts anyway, so they do not need to do that because they're not a closed district.
True.
So the majority of Wayne County, it doesn't matter if you're an employee, we're one of the ones that it does.
Okay.
Okay. No further discussions, so we can go to the next item.
Next item is Board of Education business. First one is acknowledgement of correspondence.
I do have a late email that we received at 12:44 PM, and I actually wanted to have that summarized in public, citizen participation, but totally missed that, so I apologize to Mr. Darren Kasekis. But he sent the email to all of the board members, so you have all access to it, and pretty much in support of the alumni association or alumni club letter that was sent. And I do not have other correspondence unless other board members.
We just got a lot of emails.
Yes, we did. Next item, please.
Next item is Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee Barry.
Finance committee met earlier. First agenda item was the audit, the pre-audit letter from Plant Moran. They met with us tonight, Mr. Jeff Higgins. He's been meeting with the administration the past couple months. He, his team will be returning in September, then we'll be meeting again in October in the final report. It says here due by November 1st, but he said that will be November or sometime in December they'll give us the final report. That's to be continued. He will reach out to all board members, not just the committee, his team will. We also discussed banking services, legal services, and we got an update on the state aid funds. Was there anything else?
That was the three items that we discussed. Trustee Peltchikov with the building in sight.
All right, we had the building in sight. Had a very full agenda. First, we talked about, and I hope everybody picked up their packets from Quinn Evans, which was quite a sizable read if you wanted to look at it all, but I encourage all the board members to at least read thoroughly the volume one with the summary. It was built upon the fielding study, everything that they did, so they were using that information to move forward with their assessments of all of our properties. They were very thorough. We are now into the Byram and Fisk phase with community engagement. They've been doing the one-on-one stakeholder interviews, so they've identified community members who they felt could give important feedback to fairly generic questions about what they felt was needed and how they felt about the school district. It was more about how they felt about the things the district were doing and what they saw as needs. The next move will be they will go to a focus group and then they, with new expanded questions, and then a community survey, and then at the final stage, it would be a community forum. I am going to be recommending that we do have a study session because no decisions are going to be made until we really thoroughly understand, A, what the community would like to see, and B, what is realistic and doable from the studies that we have. So we will probably be looking at going for a study session, November, December timeframe, so that by next year, we are ready to put out a bond proposal at some point in time. So that was discussed. We also did discuss, as Dr. Maleko said, the Etzel Ford naming, and all we did was go over the very loose numbers of, of how much each thing would cost to do, from the gym floor to the paintings to the hallways and whatever, and we got rough estimates of what those would be. We will have to continue to move forward with conversation of, of what we are prepared to do at the end of the day. Then we had conversation about property that's at Dearborn High, across by the softball field, by the firehouse, the, the burn firehouse that happens to belong to the Dearborn Public Schools, but the city has been using it, and, well, there's conversations about what should be done about that situation. It's been like that for a long time. And finally, we've also been asked by the police department, they would like to have a clearer direction about what we would like them to do in intervening on school grounds, after-school hours and weekends, and what we anticipate should be their authority. We do have some guidelines that are kind of generic across, and we may have to revisit a policy about tightening those up so that we can give specific directions to the police about what they should be doing when they encounter certain circumstances after school hours, because they want to make sure that they're following our wishes about how, how to approach people using school grounds. So that's the, the end of that.
So would that item be discussed at the City Relations Committee or at the?
Well, good question, because we haven't had a City Relations Committee meeting. I asked that question as well. Should we put up a list of things? One of the, their, the police department's issues is we don't have a lot of clear signage on property, like no trespassing at this time, this time, that kind. So there are a number of things that we could probably have the conversation about. I, I don't know who is on the City Relations.
I'd share that, so I should be calling soon.
So we, we may want to, yeah, convene a.
Convene a meeting and.
Meeting, yeah.
Okay. Any other item?
I, no, I just have a question. I don't know if it's moving, I'm.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll follow you after.
I have two questions, Trustee Peltchikov. Is, first, is there anything, so is there anything in our policies or that says if the police observe a crime on school grounds that they can't, like?
No, they're not talking about a crime. They're talking about what's considered trespass after, you know, those kinds of things. If they see kids in certain areas, like we, we, we highly discourage, to put it mildly, the high school fields, the football fields that have astroturf and, and things that could be damaged.
Sure.
And are also potentially a hazard, you know, when they're not properly used, and people tend to jump the padlocked gates and use the, the facilities on the weekends. And it's, it's been a issue.
Okay, and my other question is, on these Quinn Evans reports that we received, just to be clear, just to say publicly, they're not confidential or anything? We can, or are, are they?
No.
No, so we could share them with members of the public, talk about the contents of them with members of the.
I, I would be careful what you share at this point because we haven't discussed it as a board as to, so my caution would be a, a generic conversation that they've done a study and, and this is what the basic, but we haven't, they made no recommendations of the kind that we, we would be moving on.
Sure.
It's just something for us to now take to the, that's why I said we need a study session. So if you start sharing things and people have a tendency to think, oh, that's what they're going to do, they're gonna.
So these reports were not published anywhere else other than getting.
No.
Okay, all right, got it.
Trustee Barry.
We'll get the easy one, we first, Trustee Peltchikov mentioned surveys. If you get a call for a survey and there's a very generous gift card attached, don't think it's a scam. I did talk to Mr. Mustin about that. It's, no, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. $125, I didn't get a call for the survey, so I don't know if, did you?
No.
The other thing is mentioned that obviously if somebody's breaking the law on our property, the police have to act.
Yeah.
But I think we, as a board and as an administration, need to get on the same page before we answer that question. I just recently moved and the park down the street, not a park, I'm sorry, it's a school down the street from where I used to live. Beautiful, open, there's no gates on the fences, very well taken care of, families visit there all the time. I used to walk, you know, when, when there's no school going on, I would go walk around the track, no shoes whatsoever. Where I live now, the other day I went for a walk and another one of our schools looks like, the playground looks like a prison, and it's locked up most of the time. I know we, there was a policy that was, I wasn't even aware that policy existed. I know Trustee Al-Jahmi and myself receive phone calls that people would try to use that track or that playground, whatever, but they can't because it's locked up. I don't want to get into it today, but I think we, as a group, should address that. What do we want? Do we want to just like lock up every school? I don't think it should be, you know, this school's okay, this school's okay, but you cross Southfield and all of a sudden some of those schools look like, I mean, I mean, high fences and keep people out, very, very, if you want to get into it, I would be more than happy to, but I'm just saying, we should get on the same page before we take it to City Relations.
And all I want to, want to address is the fact that some school playgrounds have been treated differently than others. I have, as president of the Federation of Neighborhood Associations, fielded many complaints over the past several decades from neighborhoods who, who had issues with playground usage at, you know, midnight by teenagers who didn't have anything better to do with their time and would go there and hang out and create issues. So the schools, their only recourse at, after trying several things was to just lock it down. So that might be what you're saying, I don't know. I'm not saying.
No.
I'm just saying we have to be careful and make.
Somebody's breaking the law, if somebody's there at midnight, I mean, there's, there's, it's posted, you know, 10 PM.
That's what I'm saying, that what we have to do is be careful about how we address these situations and, and what, that, that there, it needs to be signage and posting.
Equitable.
Yeah.
We have to be fair.
I understand that.
We are, we have to, we have to get on the same page because this is not the first time that's come up. Every other year it comes up. I mean, when Trustee Mayor Lane was on the board, always came, comes up, came up a couple times. We just need to, what, what is that? I mean, if someone, is, is the track at Lindberg or Woodworth, is it okay for somebody to be there at 5 o'clock in the evening? It can't be yes here, no there. But we need to get on the same page. I'll just leave it at that.
Somebody fix his mic.
What's that?
You're getting feedback.
Oh, can I? I'm sorry.
No, it's not your phone.
Dr. Maleko?
Yeah, just, my general direction has been to keep them open. Once in a while we'll hear of one that got closed, and sometimes I get the communication as well, and there might be a, a reason, but then we've directed them to open them if they're open over a long period and Mark's here with his operations, because sometimes it's being made at the local level and we're just not aware, and something may have happened, but generally we want to keep them open. Now, when we did run the summer school, we did lock them when we have our students on there during the day. We have to do that for the safety of our students during the day, but when summer school's done, we open them, and that's been our general direction for all of them. The only ones that I know, like the main football fields are locked, the big, you know, with the turf and things like that, but those are different than, you know, the elementary playgrounds to the, you know, the tracks that we want people to use. So that's generally been my direction. I can reiterate with administration, but I'm also happy to have that discussion. So hey, if this is what the board wants, then we'll continue to go that way and make sure that all the engineers are aware, because sometimes those things are may happen or, and/or with the principals too.
Very understandable what you're saying, Dr. Maleko. Is that better?
Yeah, wait, wait.
Yeah, okay, thank you whoever did that. Very understandable, but what I'm saying is before we sit, you know, the City Relation Committee, it's this, you know, administrators from the city, administrators from the public school, we sit across the table and we have these discussions, we need to be on the same page before we have that discussion.
Good.
So I'm asking.
Shall I tell, if there are no objections, let's review that at the building in sight, and if, if it needs to be a policy, then we move it to the Policy Committee and then move it to, bring it to the entire board.
Thank you.
And after that, we convene a, a meeting with the City Relations.
Thank you.
I do have a comment, because this was brought up with Woodworth, and I think there was some loitering by maybe teenagers, maybe adults, and, and that kind of impacted the whole neighborhood. And to me, it was, the, the neighborhood was paying the price because some kids were hanging around in the parking lot and doing things that they shouldn't do. And this is where the police should come in.
100%.
In talking to Dr. Maleko, there, there was a compromise is to open it up in the custodian before they go home, lock it, but the parents, like there's some areas, especially the Woodworth area, there's not a park near. You know, they, that's just the, an area that, that's their only park, and actually they're pushing, they approached the city about putting a playground area or a playscape, and the, the city and the mayor's office pushed them to, to the board, so they called me, because they're a neglected area, not because of anything, but there's no land over there to be able to have a park. So Woodworth is really critical to that neighborhood, and the police need to step in when, when there is loitering over there. I think a lot of times we say parks, like even the hemlocks that appear in the world, people stay longer than they should and they should not be there by 10 o'clock. These are police matters that need to be addressed and we.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and that's all the, I think the police are asking for is to have a clear understanding of.
Sure.
What's going on in, at each of our schools.
We have a question, yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee.
And I don't like to have to do this, but I'm going to address Trustee Zahr.
Okay.
First, I'm going to read something in our bylaws about public expression of board members. Okay, sometimes statements imply, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase some of this, or infer that the opinions expressed or statements made are the official positions of the board. The misunderstandings that can result from these incidents can embarrass both the member and the board. Therefore, board members should, when speaking on school matters, make it clear that their views do not necessarily reflect the views of the board or of their colleagues on the board. Tonight, I was disturbed that you took aim at the ethnicity of the speakers who came up from the Etzel community and identified how you were taking count of who was Arab and who was non-Arab and what position they were taking. I, A, would like to point out that the Arab speakers, the majority, were family members of Mr. Baydun, so naturally, they would be of Arabic ethnicity. The two women who spoke are married to Arab men and have a large Arab community sensitivity that they've been involved in the community for years, and their children are raised in, in an Arabic household. And I think it was particularly insensitive of you to use your place at the table to call them out and, and their positions on a topic based upon their race. And I think you extended a disservice to the board by making it appear that this is all about them versus us. And you heightened the divisiveness that already was being felt in the community, and you extended it from something that I thought we had moved beyond. I have sat on this board since the early 2000s. I live in the east side of town and have for almost 40 years in, in a, I'm the minority in that neighborhood. I hate to see that we are bringing back to the board this type of conversation when I don't think it was called for. And I, I don't want the people who walked out of here tonight, and I wanted to wait until they were gone before I brought this up, so I wouldn't continue to create an atmosphere of divisiveness. But I'm very disappointed that that's where you chose to go for the people who had what I consider an honest opinion about what was being asked. They are members, my children went to Etzel Ford as well and graduated from Etzel Ford. There are many in this community who are not necessarily of Arab persuasion that are perfectly capable to have an opinion that may differ from yours, and biases should not be seen based upon just their either Arab or not Arab when it comes to those thoughts that they come to share, because all you're going to do is drive more people away from this community and thinking that's what this is all about. And, and I was very disappointed that, that you took that road, and I just wanted to share that now and apologize to the people who were speakers of any of the speakers that it went down that way.
Motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Barry to extend the meeting by 15 minutes, supported by Trustee Zahr. Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call. Trustee Al-Jahmi.
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo.
Yes.
Trustee Zahar, yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Peltchikov.
Yes.
Trustee Moseb.
Yes. Did you want to speak?
That's all I wanted, I was watching the clock and I saw what I'm gonna do.
Good job.
Any other commentary?
Uh, yeah.
Trustee Zahr?
I, I appreciate your comments, Trustee Peltchikov. I'll say this, I thought it was clear that I was speaking on my behalf. I said very clearly when I was spoken, was speaking, that it bothered me. I, I said me. I said that's how I feel, I think if people look back, so I don't think there was any misunderstanding that I was speaking on behalf of the board as far as that bylaw that you brought up. Look, there's no substitute for the lived experience of being an Arab-American, so living in a neighborhood or being married to somebody, I mean, it's, it's not, there's no substitute for the lived experience. I would, I would caution people against trying to think that they might understand how we feel. We, we, from my many conversations and longtime activism and work in this city, I was expressing a sentiment held by, I think, a lot, if not the vast majority of people in our community, that this is an issue because of the person, because of the background of the person that we were discussing, and that is the feeling held by many people in the city. And that is the feeling held by not just his family members, but many Arab-Americans. And it's happened before. And I was simply bringing up what I observed. And I would ask non-Arab-Americans in this city to think about how that looks. How does it look when everyone who comes up to speak for the idea of naming something after Ibrahim Baydun was Arab-American, and everyone who came up with reasons, in my, if you've read herrings or whatever, was not? How does that look? I would ask the people who came here tonight to oppose this idea, how does that look? Do you take a step back and say, man, this doesn't look right? It didn't look right to me. Do you take a step back and say, man, ha, maybe we're, maybe, maybe, maybe we got to reassess, maybe there's something going on here? I wasn't around when they named something after Derek Lowe, but I can say that it's a lot, a lot less reason to name something after him than to name something after Ibrahim Baydun, and it's the same thing. And we got people coming up here, people who joined a committee then left when it was clear maybe they weren't going to get what they, you know, I mean, this is, that is the, from my conversations, speaking on my behalf, the prevailing sentiment in our community about this and other issues, like same thing happened, like I said, with Ahmad Fadlallah six, seven years ago, whenever that issue came up. That, I believe that I was expressing a sentiment held by many people in our community. I ask again, for those people who are not Arab-American, how, I know how it looked to me. I asked other people, how, how did that, how does that, it just doesn't look good. That is not a message of unity to, to, to do that. It's not a message of, of we are all united in this city. How does that look? There were no Arab-Americans who came up and said, don't do this. That's the question you'd be asking yourself. Why is there no, no, are there any Arab-American members of the Etzel Ford varsity alumni club? I don't know, maybe there are, assume there are. They weren't here tonight coming up here lining up to talk. Why? I would defer to Arab-Americans when it comes to how we feel when we see things, how we feel when certain things happen in the community, how we feel when we want to be counted, how we feel when certain atmospheres take hold. To me, this was a. To me, this was a very uncomfortable night for us as Arab-Americans to see that. That was reminiscent of days that should be long past. They're not. That's the reality that I saw tonight.
That was your interpretation of what you saw.
Huh? Of course it's my interpretation. But it's my interpretation as an Arab-American. Not, doesn't need to be substituted by somebody else's interpretation who's not Arab-American as to how Arab-Americans should feel about that. That is, from my own, again, me, I obviously was not speaking on behalf of the board. You didn't need to bring up that bylaw at all. I obviously was not speaking on behalf of the board. I said many times, this bothers me. I said, this is how I feel. I thought I used those words. And even if I didn't use those words, obviously, it was me who was speaking. But again, how, I asked people who are not from our community, how does that look? And to me, as an Arab-American, it looked like, man, we've been down this road before. And we need to get past it, and we need to talk about it. There's no, we would not have been served tonight if all this happened and we just walked out of here pretending everything's okay and that race had, even subconsciously, had nothing to do with all of this. A guy who pitched, all my respect to Derek Lowe, whatever, but a guy who pitched a game in the World Series and was at Edsel Ford for four years, and nobody is saying anything, and red herrings about, we got a name. Was there, was there a suggestion to name something for a female coach or female varsity, or sorry, alumni at Edsel Ford? And people said, no, no. Was there a competition between Ibrahim Baydun and a woman to name? And they, no, that was a red herring. That was a red herring. And I've been through this before, and we've been through this before, when things are coached in terms that are, yes, yes. We know that, not unfortunately, but we know that discrimination, bigotry, it's not always explicit. It doesn't happen in front of your face. There aren't signs that, there aren't people who walk around Dearborn anymore as much who say, we don't want Arabs in this part of town. But there might be people who say, we don't want those kids from East Dearborn coming over here. But we know what that means. There's euphemisms. We don't want those kids from Fortson Hangout. There's euphemisms. Even if you're not in Dear, if you go to other places in metro Detroit that aren't Dearborn, and they say, we don't want those people from Dearborn, we know what they mean. Okay? It's all very subtle, but we get it. And it's okay that, as Arab-Americans, our experiences give us different ears. And my ears and eyes told me tonight, this is not right. And yes, I said something about it, and I was obviously speaking on my own behalf.
Thank you, trustees Zar. Any other commentary? If not, we can move to the next item.
Yes, no, I have a commentary as well. So on a separate issue, I will, I'm, right now, I guess, I'm making a request for a special meeting at the college to review the process of our selection of our next president. Now, as far as I understand, under our rules, we don't need to have a motion for a special meeting. Two people, two board members can call for a special meeting at a time and place, and then if four people show up, it's a meeting. But since we're all here and we're in public, I'd love to find a time where, and I don't see a reason why we can't, since we're all here, to find a time where almost all of us or almost all of us can show up. I'd like to suggest, or, you know, at least start off with making a request for a special meeting for, at the college on this Wednesday, July 30th, at 6:00 P.M. And just kind of see where people stand on that. Like I said, this doesn't need a motion. Just any two members can call for a special meeting, and if four people show up, it's a meeting, and business can be conducted. And so I'd like to start with Wednesday, July 3rd, or sorry, July 30th, this Wednesday at 6:00 P.M. at the college. And then we would notice it. Our rules require 18-hour notice. And this is a form of notice, too, but our rules will go through all the different kinds of...
And you need the reason for the meeting as well.
I'm sorry?
The reason for the meeting, what the meeting's for.
Yes, to discuss the presidential search process. I think that's specific enough.
Can I just make one note before we make a... I have, I have a concern that we're using a P-12 meeting that no college community member is attending, and it's very bad form. We generally only leave agenda items, agenda items, for the P-12 at the college or the college at the P-12 when it's an emergency kind of situation and not for doing regular business, because we could potentially be viewed by college community as trying to fly under the radar with scheduling a meeting that they're unaware of, because they are, this is not their building, they're not in the room.
Well, they're not going to be unaware of it. We're gonna notice it, just, again...
You're gonna notice it during a summer break for two days from now.
So your problem is the summer, not that we're doing...
No, no, no. I'm saying, I don't think it's appropriate to be asking for this meeting, not on college ground.
So you're saying...
Where they, where they are present in the room and will know about it. How many are going to notice?
But you know, but you, obviously, trustee Pechikov, you know that calling for a special meeting doesn't need to be even done at an open meeting. So for you to say, like, is it your position that I could only...
Calling for a special meeting...
No, two members can inform the chair that we'd like to...
Can, a special meeting can be done through an email and say, I got a call.
Right, exactly. So I'm saying, it doesn't need to be done on college, it doesn't need to be done even in public.
I understand that. I'm just curious as to why we are doing this now.
Well, because I just thought it'd be a good time to find a time where we can all do it, because we're all here, instead of making 75 phone calls. And since we're all sitting in this room and we're all publicly elected officials, we should be able to find a time. That's all. I'm trying to be efficient. I could, I, under our rules, I could have just sent an email to the chair and say, hey, I'd like to call for a special meeting on Wednesday, July 30th, at 6:00 P.M. And I could have another board member support me, and then it would be called for, and then it would be noticed, and if four people showed up, it'd be a meeting. And if four people didn't show up, then it wouldn't be.
Mr. President, I feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves here. Was that a motion, trustees Zar?
No, I'm not making a...
He's not, he's asking for a special meeting.
I'm not making, I don't, I mean, I can make a motion, and then there will be a meeting.
I'm trying to figure out...
I'm trying not to do that. I'm trying, I can, I can make a motion right now, yes. And if four people voted on it, then there'll be a meeting on Wednesday. I could do that. But instead, I'm trying to have a discussion to say, look, I'd like to call for a special meeting on Wednesday, July 30th. If there's pushback on the idea of it, instead of the idea that I'm doing it here, since we're all happening to be together, and it's in public, and we should do everything transparently. But I could call for a motion, that's fine. But I'm open to, if, Wednesday, July 30th, at 6:00 P.M., if you're truly not available, or you are available on another day later in the week or whatever, then I would be open to finding another time. That's why I'm having this discussion. But, so that as many people can make it as possible. But if four people show up, it's a meeting. So that's why I'm looking for feedback right now from people.
If we move forward on this...
If it requires a motion, I'll make a motion, huh?
If we move forward on this, can we do it at 7:00 P.M.?
Sure. I'm totally okay with 7:00 P.M.
Is there another date that you would like to suggest that...
No, I mean, I just, the sooner the better, but I mean, because again, our next regularly scheduled HFC meeting is not till August...
August 25th.
August 25th, so I mean, you know, that's a month away. So this is obviously an urgent matter, or at least a pressing matter.
I'm good with Wednesday at 7:00 P.M.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Is anyone not good with that? If you're not good with that exact time and you have another time, please tell me now. Otherwise, I'll be making a request, or we could do it through a motion right here. Either way is fine with me. If we do it as a motion right now, it's a wrap. But I don't want to do it, because that would be conducting college business, really. I could just do it through the normal chain.
I was gonna say, I would suggest maybe the board president could send out...
With, with the suggested time, work for all of you? Would somebody have...
It's not worked for me. I have homecoming. I have meetings for homecoming all weekend. I'm not available till next week.
How late is that meeting, Pat?
Starts at 5:30.
Yeah, I was told 5:30 to 6:30. That's why I asked for 7:00 P.M.
I have other stuff to do.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, I just want to make sure I got the right information, that's all.
I'm committed, from Wednesday till next Monday. So after that, you call the meetings you want.
Okay, so you could come, you could, so you would be okay with a meeting? Just, I'm looking at the, Tuesday, August 5th? You would be available to come to that meeting?
Sure.
I'm, I'm okay with that, because while I believe this is pressing, I would like everyone to be there, and that would still be two weeks before our next, three weeks, almost, actually, before our next HFC meeting. So I'm okay, is that, does Tuesday, August 5th work for you?
I'll make that work.
Does that work?
I, I have, my phone is not working. I can't get my calendar.
Okay.
Now, we still have trustee Watts, but I hope that she would be available.
Does it work for you?
It does work for me, yes.
Okay, so I'm okay with that, you know? I'm okay with Tuesday, August 5th, that we get together. Like I said, that's still three weeks before our next scheduled meeting, so I'm okay with that.
At 7:00, right?
7:00 P.M., yeah. So can I then, since, since, as a chair, you can do it sort of unilaterally, we don't need two people, right, to call for a special meeting?
I believe so. So I could have the college post the meeting.
Yeah, and that'll also give a lot more time for notice, too, so they could even post it as early as tomorrow.
Sure. Sounds good.
Could you do that? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just so we're on the record again, if you need to post the notice, the reason for the meeting, that it's to discuss the presidential search process.
Yeah, he does need to post it. It's gotta have...
Okay, so Tuesday, August 5th, 7:00 P.M. at the, at the college, obviously.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to entertain another motion to extend the meeting.
Oh, sorry, second. Second.
Move it first.
Oh, sorry, he moved it.
Oh, moved by trustee Barry.
Support.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Eljamie.
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo.
Yes.
Trustee Zahar, yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Pechikov.
Yes.
Trustee Moszov.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other commentary? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Request for information from Dr. Malakow, okay? There's none, but we can go to the next item, please.
Okay, our future meeting dates, Monday, August 18th, 2025, P-12 executive session closed for evaluation, 5:15 P.M. at the Administrative Service Center here in Room 12. Monday, August 18th, 2025, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 P.M. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom. Monday, August 25th, 2025, HFCC Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 P.M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.